Good evening. We'll call this meeting to order for the March 10th, 2022, Apple Valley City Council Meeting. I'd like to welcome both our in-person and virtual audiences this evening, or our in-person attendees. When your name is called, please approach the podium and address the council. For our virtual audience during the meeting, if you have questions or comments for the audience participation portion, please use the raised hand symbol in your meeting, and the meeting organizer will notify as you wish to speak. With that, we will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask all to rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a review of justice for all.
Thank you.
We need it.
We'll let the captain find the light switch back there. Perfect, thank you, guys. I've also done that in the back of the room, as I've leaned on the wall. The second item we have on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
Goes again.
You know, my kid's good at that, too. Tom, do we have any changes for the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. With that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Motion by Grandal, second, by Goodwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, agenda carries. The next item on our agenda is the audience participation portion of the meeting. This is for items not on the regular agenda, and we have a total of 10 minutes for this item. Meeting organizer, are there any questions or comments from the audience?
Mr. Mayor, we have no questions or comments.
Thank you. I did not see anyone sign in. However, is there anyone who wishes to speak in our live audience to this portion? I'm seeing none. We'll move on with our consent agenda. These items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or citizen requests to pull an item. Council members, are there any items to pull? Citizens in the room, are there any items you'd like to pull and discuss separately? I'm seeing none. Meeting organizer, are there any items you would like to pull? Or do we have anyone, I should say?
No items you'd like to pull.
Meeting organizer can also pull items. I guess we'll give him that ability, too, if he would like it.
Don't leave the guy out for pictures.
Yes, exactly. With that, since we have no items to discuss separately, we would take a motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Bergman and a second from Grandal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that carries unanimously, and we will move on to our regular agenda. The first item is always the fun one. We get to introduce a new police officer this evening, and I would welcome up our police chief to do the honors.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Yeah. John, before you start, we have family, we have friends here. For those who would like a picture, please feel free to come up behind here and get one.
We'll get out of your way.
Thank you, Mayor. And I did tell them before the meeting, you guys are really friendly about that, comfortable coming up. So anyways, it's an exciting time for us, bringing new life into our department. This is an honorable profession. Evan Chirpik chose to go down this path and join us, and he's joining the ranks of the Apple Valley PD. We're proud of him for making that decision, and I assure his family and friends that are here supporting him tonight are very proud. A little bit about him. Evan Chirpik grew up in Edina, Minnesota, and he graduated from high school there. After that, he attended college down at Minnesota State, Mankato, where he graduated in 21, 2021, with a bachelor's degree in law enforcement. And then, of course, he was hired here and completed his field training program here in the Apple Valley Police Department just recently, which is quite rigorous, as you know. And of course, his training will be ongoing from this point forward. Nobody ever stops training around here, learning new things. We develop them fully. His previous work history included working customer service as a manager, and then also security through all his college career, including some of his friends here tonight that apparently were assisting with that endeavor on the college campus. We have other security staff tonight. So Evan's interests include spending time with his family and friends, and also participating in outdoor activities. And then attending tonight, he has a couple of really special guests, or a few. Besides his friends, he has his mother and father, Peter and Judy Chirpik. Could you guys please stand for me? We got it right there? Yes. All right. And then his fiancee, Abby. She made it. All right. Okay. Without any further ado, I'm going to have you join the city clerk and take the oath.
I think he's going to come right up here by the flag, so you guys might want to reposition just a little bit.
Please raise your right hand to greet the citizens of the city.
I, Evan Chirpik, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Minnesota, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officers of the City of Apple Valley, in the County of Dakota, and the State of Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
All right.
(applause)
The shield is a symbol of trust. This is the Apple Valley Police. Never let it charge.
Mayor and council, with your permission, I'd like to step outside with my officers and take a few photos.
Absolutely. Before you go, though, welcome, Officer Chirpik. We are thrilled to have you. You're joining a great department, one we are immensely proud of. We're happy to have you. Thank you.
One round of applause.
We'll give everybody just a few minutes to settle and get out for pictures and do whatever we need to do. And we'll watch the whole room just kind of empty out here now that everyone's done. Thank you all.
Congratulations. Thanks.
Oh, that's nice.
Maybe you can recruit a few more people.
Yeah. Gee, Tim, I thought they were all here for you.
Well, we'll come back in.
We'll get them back in.
Well, we have another special item on the agenda this evening. It is to recognize Tim Burke, and I'm going to turn it over to Bruce and let him get us started.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I want to capture, just for a moment, I'm not going to read this slide, the impact and role one volunteer can play if offering service for 24 years in the city. And with that, I'd like to ask Tim Burke to join me up front. Just hug, hug the corner there, buddy. Well, will you press go? I think our, my mouse isn't working, but as we continue, Tim is actively involved, and by his words, a quiet leader that helped the Planning Commission establish those other keys to the city that guide the city council in goal setting. Mr. Mayor, with that, I believe council members Bergman and Malander have comments, perhaps others as well, and there is a proclamation to be read.
Wonderful.
You can just stand here.
You're stuck there for just a bit, Tim.
Can I go first?
No. John, why don't you go first?
Thank you. I had the privilege of working with Tim on the Planning Commission. That's where I came from. I had three and a half years with him. I sat where council member Grandal sat. Now, council member Malander was next to me, then Tim, and did we have a great time. Since I left that after three and a half years to be fortunate to sit at this chair, Tim and I have always kept in contact. And so, when anything that was very important, and I used to watch all the Planning Commission meetings all the time, and then you slowly go away from it, then you'd go back, but anything that was major came in, Tim and I had a conversation. And so, with that, 24 years is a long time, but you'll be missed, but you are greatly appreciated. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Councilor Malander.
Mayor Hoopaw was gracious enough to let me make a couple of comments here in recognition of your service, Tim. Long ago and far away, I was a 21-year-old kid, and that is long ago and far away. And I got introduced to Toastmasters, which is quite an organization. And the thing that I liked best about it was when you were the Toastmaster for the evening, you got to introduce all the speakers, and you could say nice things about people. And life frequently doesn't present great opportunities for saying nice things about other people. You might think them, but they don't frequently get said. And I have nothing but respect and admiration for the way you've conducted yourself over the years, and keeping me in the straight and narrow when I made many mistakes as Chair of the Planning Commission. So, that being said, Planning Commission is a volunteer position, and there's a big difference between volunteering to judge a barbecue contest and volunteering to be on the front lines when the citizens show up with torches and pitchforks, which does happen from time to time. And throughout it all, Tim was always calm and reasoned and steady. He could slide through the rocks and the rapids without bumping into them. It was great to see, because there were some tough issues that we had to deal with, and we made it through. And it's a nice thing to see folks showing up at these meetings. A lot of times, these seats are empty, both in planning and for city council, except when, you know, your own little backyard issue comes up. But there's a lot of work that's done, and these are a lot of hours across 24 years, and a lot of tough stuff that had to be dealt with, and a lot of time to spend to do this. And most folks, frankly, are willing to invest that kind of time for a volunteer position. And Tim did it, and did it without any complaining, you know? You never shirked, you never wavered, and I'm proud to call you my friend.
Appreciate that, Tom.
That being said.
Let's let Councilmember Goodwin say a few things, and I have you present the proclamation when he's done.
Well, I have a question for Mr. Burke and Mr. Malander. Now, my understanding is, this is just what I've been told, that when Mr. Bergman got elevated to the council, that things got a little easier on the Planning Commission. Is that true?
He's not answering that. I think he's...
Oh, he, where is he going?
Just made it harder for us.
Yeah.
Wow.
I think...
Just kidding.
I know.
John, John and I were in some very long meetings. I think there was a lot of times when the Planning Commission went from seven until midnight on some of the issues, and thank heavens, those were years ago, when we were younger than now. But early on, and that's because the city was in a state of rapid development, and we're getting it pretty well planned out now. But it's been a pleasure to be part of it for 24 years. I enjoyed every meeting that I went to. Like I always said, I enjoyed sitting on the left of Tom to make sure that he didn't lean too far left.
You gotta worry about that, don't you?
And to be vice chair while he was chair, and all with the other commissioners that we've had over the years. It's been a pleasure to be a part of it, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve, and wish the best to those who get to serve after this.
Thank you. John, would you read the proclamation? Please, please do. And I don't have to tell you this, but get close enough to the microphone, so those who are watching remotely can hear you.
Whereas, Tim Burke and Sue purchased a home in Apple Valley in 1981, when there were 21,818 people in the city, and raised a family of thirteen, three Eagle Scouts, not 13. The eyes aren't what they used to be. These few graduates. And whereas, Tim Burke's, by profession, was an advertising account manager in Minneapolis and pursued a 36-year career, and also blundered into applying for the, appointed in the Apple Valley Planning Commission in 1998. And whereas, Tim Burke has served as a commission for 24 years, leading as vice chair in support of the work of the Planning Commission, and Chair Malander beginning in 2011, and is chair since 2021. And whereas, Tim Burke served Apple Valley by participating in the development of the 2020, 2030, and 2040 comprehensive plans that harness the aspirations and imaginations and dreams, shared visions, and oftentimes complex puzzles related to the solution best practice development, change, and revitalization of a now 53-year-old community of 56,374 people. Whew. And whereas, there's more. As an Apple Valley Planning Commissioner, has the desirable skill set to ethically guide and recognize rezoning and subdivision requirements in site planning, building permit authorizations by listening and learning from residents, staff, and developmental partners. And whereas, over 24 years, there were 470 Planning Commission meetings and an estimated 55 annual average related action items, to draw the conclusion that there were 1,300 action items recommended to the city council by Tim Burke as a commissioner. But you didn't know all that.
I didn't keep track.
Now, therefore, being resolved, the city council of the City of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota, hereby recognizes Tim Burke for his leadership and service over 24 years, as in considered plans and making and supporting recommendations that allowed the City of Apple Valley to plan, develop, and prosper. Proclaim this 10th day of March, 2022. Mayor.
Thank you, Tim. Tim, before you get too far, why don't we just join up front here, get a quick picture with Tim if we could, and just pause for a second to do that?
Would the wife like to come up and be part of this?
Well, I was gonna like take a picture.
Can I come over here? And before, before we move on, we actually need to make this official, so I would entertain a motion to accept that proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Grandal and a second from Malander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that carries. Thank you again, Tim, for the service. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask, how many years were you on it?
Two less than Tim, I think.
So between, so it's 22, so we're talking 46 years between the two of you.
Plus John.
Oh, John, how long were you on it?
Yeah. Or we can subtract those.
All right, let's...
Forty-six years, I mean, years between you. It would be a great loss for the Planning Commission.
Great city.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you.
You can go now if you would like.
Or you can stay.
He doesn't want to stay.
Fascinating stuff.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is to conduct a public hearing for the vacation of Gardenia Avenue and 151st Street West Right-of-Way. This item was postponed from February 10th, and Kathy has this item, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Apple Auto Properties, Galbranson Real Estate and Apple Ford Lincoln, Apple Valley, request consideration of the following this evening. A request that the city council conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation of Gardenia Avenue and 151st Street Right-of-Way, abutting the property 7125-151st Street. The Gardenia Avenue and 151st Street Right-of-Ways that are being considered are located in between two parcels. The first is the Apple Collision and Glass property, the former auto mall, at 7125-151st Street. And the second property is the main Ford dealership property at 7200-150th Street. So the segments to be vacated are between those two properties. So the sections requested for vacation would be Gardenia Avenue from County Road 42 South to 151st Street, and then approximately 240 feet of 151st Street. And then in connection with that, what Ford is proposing is to dedicate easements so that 151st Street could be terminated in a cul-de-sac. The vacation is requested to allow Ford Lincoln to be able to redevelop the Collision and Glass site to create a dedicated Lincoln dealership property, and then to be able to combine the Lincoln dealership with the Ford dealership properties, so to create a single campus. The Planning Commission is currently reviewing, site plan review, building permit authorization, and conditional use permit related to the redevelopment, and this vacation is one element of that project. So when the city mails out, or when we receive an application for a vacation, our procedure is we need to contact all of the utility companies that serve the area. In this case, we heard from four of the utility providers frontier, CenterPoint Energy, Dakota Electric, and Charter Communications. And this map is not intended to be readable. Just know that they raised concerns and that they have services in those areas. And in fact, City of Apple Valley, as a public service provider, has service lines in 151st Street. So we also have a concern about that. The staff report incorrectly lists Excel Energy as one of the companies. That's a mistake. Apologies. Should have been Charter Communication. So the four companies sent letters, they're included in the staff report, saying that they support the business, but at this time, they are concerned about the vacation and are voicing an objection for now, until the project moves forward and they're sure that their issues are addressed. When a vacation moves forward, the city will be evaluating is the right-of-way area that's requested to be vacated, is still needed? Is there a public purpose for the right-of-way? Based on the feedback that we've received for utility companies, right now, it appears that there is a need for that right-of-way. So we will be looking for Ford Lincoln to revise their plans to address the issues that were identified by the utility companies. So tonight, Mr. Mayor, staff is requesting simply to open the public hearing, receive comments, and close the public hearing. And then, once the rest of the project moves forward out of Planning Commission, then the whole package would come together for the city council's review and action. So with that, I can stand for any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Kathy. So what we're focused on here tonight is purely the public hearing and the vacation, and not other elements of the project, correct?
Right. That's correct.
So with that, I would just ask council if there are any questions to start with before we open the hearing.
I'm a little puzzled. Some of these issues, like with utilities, are these new right now, or how come these things haven't been looked at previously?
Councilmember, this is part of the process, where we kind of send out the letter, does anybody care? And then that's when we hear back. So we've been working with them on that.
I just saw, I just saw a lot of this had been taken care of.
I believe that was one of the reasons we needed to postpone the hearing from last month, was to receive the utility letters back.
That's exactly right.
Are there any other questions for Kathy? If not, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. For those in our in-person audiences, is there anyone who would like to speak to this item at the public hearing? Meeting organizer, is there anyone in the virtual audience who would like to speak to the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, we have no one who would like to speak.
Thank you. One more, one more request to our in-person attendees. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing on this issue? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I think that's all we need to do this evening. Guys, thanks for being here. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That brings us to staff and council communications this evening. Tom, anything from staff?
Mr. Mayor, yes, a couple, three updates from the staff tonight. I'll take the first two, and then we'll have Eric Carlson, our Park and Rec Director, take the third one. So the first one is just to acknowledge that the new spring/summer city newsletter has been finished up and is in the mail. So if you haven't received it yet, you will shortly. If you've looked at it, it's been newly redesigned, so we want to commend our staff for doing their work on that and really giving it a fresh, new look. And obviously, it is filled with a lot of good information, both on the city side, and it's also your source for information on the park and recreation activities coming up here this summer. So do spend some time with that if you're interested in any of those items. The second item would be the fact that our police department is going to be holding their Teen Police Academy, and that is something that we do in cooperation with the Rosemount Police Department. It is open to high school students. It offers high school students an inside look at policing in our two departments. The four-week course will start April the 7th, and it's free for anybody that wishes to sign up for that. So more information on the Teen Police Academy is available on our city's website. The third item is for Eric Carlson, and the weather will soon be warming, and we need some people. So Eric is going to tell us about our staffing needs.
You're already, I know you are.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
What have we done then?
Members of the audience and members that may be watching at home. So we are recruiting for a lot of vacant positions. We have in Parks and Recreation and in other parts of the city as well. So the city does pay a good wage for our part-time seasonal employees, anywhere between 11 and approaching $20, depending on the position you might be interested in. We're looking for people that are 16 years or older for some positions. Some positions require you to be 18 years or older. A lot of positions require some training. We will provide the training. So if you know anyone that is looking for a job, if you yourself is looking for a job, if you know somebody that isn't looking for a job but maybe should have a job, maybe encourage them to apply. Look, take a look at some of the opportunities we have, and work with us this summer. It's a great opportunity to get some skills. It's often a first job that kids will have, and sometimes it leads to a career. So you can check it out at our website. You can call the Park and Recreation Department. We are open to hire, and we're interested in any and all applicants.
Thank you, Eric. Councilmember Goodwin.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to compliment the staff who is... Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to compliment the staff who was ever responsible for it. I just want to add to the city administrators' comments about that newsletter. It was absolutely terrific, beautiful, and about as professional as I've ever seen. So, and I didn't even know which, whichever staff was involved in it. But would you please tell all our staff that was involved in it, thank you very much for that really terrific, really traditional, terrific newsletter.
Thank you. Councilmember Melander.
I recall last year, the, among the positions they were looking for were lifeguards, and it included certification for lifeguard training, if that's again this year, which I think is normally about $300.
About $300.
So it's, it's a heck of a deal. None of that to hang out at the pool all summer long. It sounds like a great job to me.
So you're applying?
Those days are long gone.
Councilmember Grendel still has her license.
No.
Councilmembers, are there any communications from anyone here? I would just like to wish a happy birthday to an Apple Valley resident who turned 105 on Monday.
Wow.
Floyd Skinner, resident down at, at the Acumen Facility. He's been an Apple Valley resident for 40 years. Floyd was born in 1917, and for trivia buffs, Woodrow Wilson was president, if that gives you any idea of perspective. I had to celebrate with him on Sunday morning. He enlisted in the Army at 17 in 1945. He left the Army and flew for Northwest Airlines until he retired in about 1980. Then went on to volunteer at ridges for about 11 years, and is still an active photographer and loves pictures of flowers. And you can actually see some of his work hanging down at Acumen. So what a great way to start my Sunday off, and a happy birthday, Floyd. We're glad to have you in Apple Valley. So with that, the next item on our agenda is to approve the calendar of upcoming events. Our next regular city council meeting is Thursday, March 24th at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion to approve the calendar?
So moved.
Okay.
A motion from Bergman, second from Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Calendar is approved, and with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Second.
Motion from Grendal, second from Goodwin. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we're adjourned. Everybody have a great night.